Good evening, the City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for September eighteen, two thousand and twenty-five is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature this year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings through June two thousand and twenty-seven. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestream, also being recorded. In order to ensure the hearing, this hearing of the board is open to the public. Members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city of Boston's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows. Elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. Chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. So like yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mrs. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called on or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Mr. Stenbridge?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Ms. Better Brazza.
Good evening, Madam Chair. This is Hansey Present.
Floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll go to the hearing scheduled for five P M. this evening. First, we have case B O A one seven three, three, two, six, three, with the address of eight Auburns, Auburn Street. If the applicant and or their representative present, would they please explain to the board?
Sure. Hello, my name is Tim Shan. I'm the architect for the project. My client David is on is on here as well. This is eight Auburn Street. It's a single-family, three-story brick townhouse. What we're here for is the roof deck that as drawn and designed needs relief from the zoning because it's the house is thirty-eight feet as it sits now. So we're over the height limitation of thirty-five feet. And basically, if you see that as you go through the drawings, you'll see the house. That's it. It's actually it's an end row house, so it's sort of closer to Main Street than Bunker Hill Street. It's it's so the first house on Auburn Street as you get around the corner. You see the existing drawings. There's an existing head house there now with a little spiral staircase, the four-and-a-half-foot spiral staircase that goes up there now. There's an existing head house as you see. You want to move to the next page? Excellent. And this is the roof deck we proposed. It's fifteen feet wide, fifteen-four by just almost thirty-two feet long. Because of the four percent grade of the roof, we would have two sections separated by sixteen inches, two risers. Because mainly because of the layout of the of the house, but also because of the size of the head house, we'd like and and just because spirals are awful to walk up, we'd like to put a traditional set of stairs with a hatch and on a hatch structure over the stairs that exist now. And if you look closely at my right side elevation, you'll see that head house, it has an odd roof shape. It's sort of sloped, an offset ridge slope both ways. And it doesn't have legal code legal head height. It's like five feet at one end and like six, five at the other. So what we're also asking along with the roof deck was to add, you know, eighteen inches to that head height, you know, to that head house to get seven feet of sailing inside, sailing height inside. That's essentially it. That's the project. We had a neighborhood meeting. It was I don't think anybody was there. With that, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This applicant completed the O N S community process. Our office hosted in a Butters meeting on Monday, May fourth, at which no concerns were raised. With that background, our office defers to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't have additional comments, Madam Chair.
That may have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the project be reviewed by the B P D for the back and amber line.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Good luck.
Next, we have case B O A one seven four, eight, nine, nine, five, with the address of sixteen Chestnut Street. It's the applicant and or their representative present, they please explain to the board.
I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the board. I am the owner of sixteen Chestnut Street. I live in Charlestown. I'm at seven Russell Street in Charlestown presently. This is a pretty straightforward project. It's a single-family house that we're we're looking to return to its former glory. We're here for three separate violations. The first one being the floor area ratio is excessive. The allowed floor area ratio on this project is twenty-seven hundred square feet. And we're going to be at around thirty-two and a half square feet. Basically, we're we're going to go over because of the addition of a extra living space in the basement. There's not going to be any additional bedrooms in the basement. It's going to be like a basically an extra like family room, you know, hangout room with an additional bathroom. And then there's some storage and some utilities down there. On the first floor is going to be a formal living room, dining room, kitchen. And then there's going to be a sunroom out back. If you go up to the second floor, you'll find three additional bedrooms on that level with another two bathrooms. And then you'll see the the second reason that we are here today. It's for the roof structure restriction. So basically, there was a deck there previously, just the same as the basement was actually already refinished when we purchased it. But the previous owner did so without a permit. So we're basically here to, you know, do things the right way and rebuild this roof deck that was here in the back, which also violates the rear yard setback. So that's kind of both of those violations. That's kind of why we're here for those. All the other houses on that street kind of have this this similar layout with a roof deck, you know, in this same location. And then on the top floor, there's going to be a master suite with a balcony off the back. That's pretty much it.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the O N S community process. Our office hosted in a Butters meeting on August twelfth, at which no concerns were raised. With that background, our office defers judgment to the board. Thank you.
Any other raised hands?
Yes, we have somebody in on the attendee section. The number is six, one, seven, three, oh, eight, seven, two, C, six. You are allowed to speak now if you're.
Oh, hi. Thank you. My name is Melissa Brennan. I live at eight Chestnut Street. So just a couple of things. I was not notified of the community meeting. I did ask Sean Breen if a community meeting had happened after I received this notice. And he told me he would get back to me, but I didn't hear back from him. I just wanted to bring a couple of things to the board's attention, namely that these the construction has been ongoing and they dumped a dumpster right in the middle of the street without a permit. And my sister lives at number ten, so she went out to tell the workers that you need a permit for a dumpster and you can't leave it. This is an active street. And they moved it, but the next day they came back and did the same thing. So I looked up the deed of the house and it's actually owned by an L L C. I wasn't aware that the Endicott's owned it. So I called the lawyer that's listed as the resident agent of the L L C, Douglas Mercurio, and I left a message complaining about what happened with the dumpster and nobody ever called me back.
So I just bring this here. Thank you. Can you just sort of get to the punchline? Are you for or against? Why?
Well, I'm against this if the construction is going to continue in the same manner. I just asked if this is approved, that the owners, you know, get the proper permits for whatever they need as the construction goes on and are considerate of the neighbors as this is a tight street and all the houses are right up against each other. And if there's like a number I could call with any complaints going forward, because like I said, the attorney would never call me back.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Any any other raised hands?
No, we don't have additional comments.
Would the applicant like to briefly respond to that concern?
Yes, so I actually was made aware of your your complaint by that lawyer, Doug Mercurio. And we did file for a street permit after that. So when once we got that permit, that's when the dumpster went back into place. And the and the reason that construction has started already is because we have a we have a short form permit to do the other work on the house that does not violate any of these, any of these codes. So we haven't done any work on the basement and we haven't built that deck in the back.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put for a motion of approval with B P D design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one seven zero, eight, eight, seven, one, with the address of twenty-three to twenty-nine School Street. It's the applicant and or their representative present, they please explain to the board.
Hi, I'm here. This is Aku from Bullskin Babe. I just wanted to share.
Are you are you the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed.
Yes, so let me just I just want to show the screen.
So you cannot share your screen, but this is what you submitted? So if you can speak to what's here, that would be.
Oh, okay, perfect. All right, so I submitted the the plan for twenty-seven, twenty-nine School Street. I have a spot. I'm just adding a service and I had to do a variance. I'm adding a microblading and a micro shading in one of the rooms. And I just needed to go through the process because it was a change of occupation. I mean, additional of variance.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding twenty-nine School Street, our office defers to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including a subcommittee flyer distribution on June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. During the community comment period, I didn't receive any emails or letters regarding or phone calls regarding the proposal. The applicant was also connected with the Downtown Boston Alliance, and they did have a meeting with them, and they were also connected with the other relevant civic association in the area of the Downtown Boston Neighborhood Association. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you everyone for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we don't have additional comments.
Would that may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put for a motion of approval.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one seven five, nine, eight, zero, eight, with the address of one twenty to one twenty-six Emerson Street. If the applicant and or their representative present, they please explain to the board.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Charlie Tevnen. I'm an attorney at fifteen Broad Street in Boston. I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant Sean George and on behalf of the proposed Gong Cha public, excuse me, bubble tea. Bryant Lung and Apple Lung are also the proponents. They are also appearing today on this hearing and are available to answer any questions. The the building at one twenty Emerson Street is a four-story mixed-use building, which was newly constructed in two thousand and twenty-two at the site of the former Federico's Bike Shop. It's comprised of commercial space on the first floor and one accessible residential unit. And and floors two to four have five residential units. It's located in a multifamily local services subdistrict. The applicant proposes to completely fit out the interior of the retail space and accommodate up to twenty patrons. The 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 nature of the items being sold are bubble tea, waffles, and ice cream. The expected hours of operation are between ten A M. and eleven P M. The proponent has completed the neighborhood process and the Butters process. We did become aware just yesterday, following a lightly attended or or no-attended Butters meeting. We became aware just yesterday of a director Butter, Tom English's pub, who apparently was unaware of this project and and did express some concerns. Bryant Lung, a one of the two proponents, our applicants, had an in-person meeting yesterday with Mr. English in response to Mr. English's concerns. Bryant is willing to initially roll back the closing time for the first few months of operation to nine thirty P M. And we also have been in touch with Councilor Flynn's office and Councilor Murphy's office. I personally called Mr. English and his is a chief of operations today twice and attempted to reach out to both of them before this hearing to address any other concerns. But in some, looking at the surrounding context, given its location, longstanding commercial use, it it will be a positive addition to the neighborhood. We feel the project is appropriate. And in closing, the proponents are available on the hearing to answer any community process, operations, or design-related questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the O N S community process. Our office hosted in a Butters meeting on June sixteenth, at which no concerns were raised. This proposal is in the catchment area of the City Side Neighborhood Association, which is aware of the proposal and chose to take no position. With that background, O N S defers judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Melissa Liu, and I will be speaking on behalf of Counselor Flynn's office. Counselor Flynn would like to go on record in support based on working closely and consulting with neighbors and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association during the community process, as well as agreeing today on a good faith compromise to change the closing hour from eleven P M. down to nine P M. At the same time, Counselor Flynn has heard from neighbors and local businesses that feel as though they were left out. He acknowledges the city needs to do a better job engaging Butters and small businesses in the community process moving forward. Lastly, he respectfully requests that proponent work closely with neighbors, civic groups, and our nearby businesses to address any quality of life and pedestrian safety issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another person, iPhone eight. If you can say your name and address, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anthony Gilardi from City Council, Aaron Murphy's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this application with the caveat that the proponent works, keeps on working with the neighborhood and direct the Butters during the process as they move to opening and also to work with all involved on pedestrian safety as well. We appreciate the the compromise of the rollback hours. And the counselor, as I just mentioned, will go on record in support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, there are no additional comments.
Would that may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put for a motion of approval.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair and fellow board members and Mr. Ambassador.
Next, we have case B O A one seven five, nine, five, six, eight, with the address of sixteen twenty-one to sixteen thirty-one Louisville Avenue. If the applicant and or their representative present, they please explain to the board.
Okay, I think Nicole is on the tennis section. She, okay, is now on the panelist section. Please. I don't know, Nicole, are you here for this project? No. Okay, sorry about that. I don't think that is anyone here for. Okay, she is having trouble to unmute herself.
Do you need to unmute her first or is she? Is this on her end?
I asked her to unmute, but I don't know. I'm trying, but I cannot unmute her. Nicole, are you still having trouble to unmute yourself?
So I might suggest we move on and maybe Nicole should try to hang up and call back in. I don't know if that is an issue, so let's move on and we'll circle back to her.
Okay, sounds good.
So we'll move on to move, we will move on to case B O A one six nine, six, two, three, three, with the address of four seventeen to four twenty-three C West Broadway. The applicant and or their representative present, they please explain to the board.
Hi, my name is Justani Gonzalez. I'm the owner of Rising Road Beer Salon. I'm here to request a change of occupancy in order to add body art and permanent makeup to my existing salon. No exterior structural work is being proposed. This is just to add the change of occupancy.
Other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This applicant completed O N S community process. Our office oversaw distribution of an informational flyer to Butters, which solicited no comments. The City Side Neighborhood Association took no position on this application. With that background, our office defers judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we don't have additional comments.
Even with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put for a motion of approval.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one seven four, four, five, two, one, with the address of eight Grand Field Avenue. It's the applicant and or their representative present, they please explain to the board.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Michael Chavez. I'm the co-founder and principal of Social Impact Collective, the architecture firm that is representing Ms. Christina Fernandez, who's also on the call. My address is twenty-six Amhill Park. The proposal is for an conversion of an attic to a third unit in an existing two-family. I'm in between kid pickups and soccer practice. I'm going to pass it off to our project architect, Sam Hitchin, to walk you through the presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Yes, so up on the screen, we have the eight Grand Field residence, existing two-family residence with an attic. The client would like to convert the attic to an additional unit to create a three-family home. We go to the next slide. So the variance that we are looking for is for the lot area minimum. We'll be slightly over that with adding the third unit to the property. We are parking for two cars on site. We go to the next slide, please. So just a little bit of context for the property. It's on the angled lot outlined in yellow. You'll see from this photo and the existing in the in the neighborhood that the majority of the homes surrounding it are existing three-family homes. So it will be typical of the use in the neighborhood. Next slide. So we have some existing context photos here. So views from Grand Field Street of the house. You can see the existing siding with detailing, et cetera. Thank you. Next slide. This is a sample of the surrounding neighborhoods. So you see the summary on the right side. We're looking at three families, four to six families. So a lot of similar project, similar uses in the neighborhood. Next slide. This is the proposed design. So the elevation on the left, you'll see the new dormers being added to the third floor to create the head height required for the new unit. The plan on the right is the first floor plan, so there is no changes on the first floor. The door to the left at the front of the building will be for the lower unit. The door on the right will serve the unit on level two and the new unit on level three. We go to the next plan. This is the second floor on the left and then the new unit on the right. So on the second floor, there'll be a new entrance into the level two unit on the there will also be a door up to the third floor new unit. And you'll see it's a two-bedroom unit with a bath, kitchen, living space, and a and unit laundry. The new stair will be at the front of the house to provide co-compliant access, and the existing rear stair will be will remain in place. Next page. So these are just some elevations of the proposed addition. So we tend to keep the same materials matching the existing building and retain key architectural elements of the window styles and trims to match the existing building. And we go to the last slide. So this is just the the other views of the of the building. That's the end of our presentation.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
They're pretty straightforward. It's a pretty straightforward addition. Just observations that it's just kind of maximized completely to the footprint typically. In the past, B P D likes kind of sufficient setbacks and to look at the ridge. But I see they don't they didn't have any comments, so no, no questions for me.
May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Roseland D O Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an Butters meeting facilitated on August fourth that was very lightly attended with no inquiries or concerns raised. Following the Butters meeting, no further community process was required, and the proposal was approved to move forward. At this time, our office has not received any further community feedback. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, there are no additional comments.
Would that may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, with community support, I'm going to put for a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Next, we have case B O A one seven zero, eight, seven, one, zero, with the address of one oh nine Clement Avenue. It's the applicant and or their representative present, they please. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Momney. I'm the homeowner at one oh nine Clement Avenue. Um, and thank you for your time this evening. Uh, if you could please go to sheet A one. Just, I believe, page four. So um, that's it right there. Thank you. My. My, my wife and I uh, bought this house um, in January of twenty twenty-four. We've loved living in West Roxbury, um, continuing to call Boston our home. We have a growing family. Uh, our son was born about a year ago. Um, this is the current footprint of the house. Um, and it's a great house for us right now, but there's a, a few um. Things we'd like to change to accommodate our growing family. Uh, you'll note that there's um, sort of. One bathroom in the main living area of the house on the second floor. There's a toilet in the basement and there's a bathroom up on the third floor, which is um, a, a sort of en suite. That we use when my mother-in-law is staying with us. So um, we were, one of our projects was to add an additional bathroom. Um, the house is a bit disjointed as well. We wanted to try to um, make for sort of more cohesive floor plan. Um, bring the kitchen and the living space um, together. Um, and additionally, we wanted to create a sort of secondary entrance. Uh, to bring people around, to not have folks come into the front of the house at all times, so we could have sort of a mudroom. And lay down area. Um, if you go to the next um. Uh, sheet, please. Um. Sorry, sheet A three. One more. Thanks. So um, our, our proposal is essentially a um, sixteen-foot addition directly off of the rear of the house. Um, it's the full width of the house, uh, except for um, an area for a small deck uh, on the first floor. The, we're, we're confirming and maintaining the house as a single family, um, and just adding some additional living space for us. Um, there is a existing side yard um, setback. That's pre-existing non-conforming at the house that we are um, uh, lessening. By removing the current side entrance that exits to the rear and putting on a new side, a front-facing side entrance. That's farther from the, the house next to us, but still within the, the side yard setback. So we'll, we'll need a variance for that sort of continuation. We've also, um, obviously we're adding floor areas, so we're increasing the FAR um, above what's permitted. Um, uh, on, on site. And then finally, because we are adding um, an additional dormer on the third floor to sort of expand the existing bedroom up there. The floor area of the third floor floor plate is now greater than half of the floor area of the floor plates below. And so it constitutes the third floor. So although there's no change in the height of the building. Uh, it goes from being a two-and-a-half story to a three-story building. Um, that's a summary of the relief we're seeking. Uh, some of the benefits, like I said, we have a, we're, we're adding sort of a side entrance with a mudroom. The kitchen will be um, sort of in the addition on the first floor and will be combined with a, a sort of family room. Um, we'll be adding new basement level living space. And then on the, on the second floor, we'll be adding an en suite bathroom and expanding a bedroom, uh, and giving that an en suite bathroom as well. Uh, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I'm happy to answer any other questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board Member C. Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted in a butters meeting on May twentieth at which no concerns were raised. The applicant presented to the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which voted to support the application. With that background, ONS defers judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no additional comments.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put for a motion of approval.
May I have a second? Mr. Stenbridge? Ms. Better Brazza? Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you all. Have a nice evening.
Madam Chair, we'll circle back to a previous case. That, that being case BOA one seven five nine five six eight. With the ad- address of sixteen twenty-one to sixteen thirty-one Blue Hill Avenue. Applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, Nicole was here. Once again, let me, she is on the tennis section.
There we go. I think I got it.
Okay, we can hear you.
Great. How are you?
Good, good. Please uh, proceed.
Yeah, so this is just an ownership change. We purchased the store. And we've done no work, but I'm just trying very hard to get my CV license. And I think this is the last step that I need was to come before you guys. To, I guess, remove a proviso that was put onto the previous owner.
Okay, that's as straightforward as they get. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Mattapan Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. Due to the nature of the proposal, our office does not envision any concerns and a full community process was not required. And the proposal was approved to go before the zoning board of appeals. To date, our office has not received any community feedback, either in support or opposition of the proposal. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no additional comments.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move forward with a motion of approval.
May I have a second? Mr. Stenbridge? Ms. Better Brazza? Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, ma'am.
Thank you.
So with that, Madam Chair, we'll move on to the board's final opportunity case scheduled for five, five PM. That is case BOA one seven zero eight four eight one. With the address of forty-five Oriole Street. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
And Madam Chair, it's Carol. I may provide a brief um, introduction of what the applicant's asking.
That would be great.
Okay, um, so the applicant um, applied to build a detached garage with an in-law suite. Which requires an ERT permit. Um, they were advised to apply for both, for both an ERT and an ALT for the same project. Uh, ISD issued refusal letters citing the exact same zoning violations and labeled it as forty-five Oriole. And forty-five A Oriole, even though it should have only been one address, one project, one refusal letter, just one ERT. Um, on July eighth, the board heard the ELT um. Application, but not the ERT. Um, the, the board heard forty-five Oriole. Um, every single zoning code violation was granted really by this board. Um, and today, I believe Greg's here just to confirm that all the zoning relief has been granted for the ERT. Uh, and again, every zoning code violation that was cited for forty-five A Oriole. It's also cited for forty-five Oriole. Uh, and so this is more of an administrative error on ISD's part.
Great, thank you. With that, Mr. Lewis, uh, would you like to confirm?
Uh, yeah, so I, I don't know what else to say since she really covered everything. So we got, we got approval at the July eighth full committee meeting. Um, but then had trouble pulling the permit, at which point we realized um, there was a clerical error and forty-five A wasn't added. So just, so relatively simple project, a, a garage detached uh, with living quarters above. Uh, I don't think it's technically an ADU. There's no kitchen. It's just a bathroom, bedroom and uh, and living room. For hopefully infrequent uh, and temporary use by visiting relatives. And maybe children returning from college, et cetera. So I, I, I think I'll leave it there unless you want more information about the project.
That's great. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put for a motion of approval of the request.
Is there a second? Mr. Stenbridge? Ms. Better Brazza? Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, all.
Thank you.